Okay, good afternoon, folks. Sorry for the short delay here. We've got some things going on, but we've got them resolved. It's now December 3, 2013. At 6:00 p.m., we're gathered here in the City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street in Granbury, Texas, calling this council meeting to order. I'd like to call upon Ms. Teresa Smith to lead us on our invitation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Lord. Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity and the ability to meet together, Father. We look forward to settling issues of our city. We pray for unity in this meeting. We pray, Father, that we are able to go forward with what's good for Granbury. Father, I just pray that all of our leaders, Father God, are in understanding, Father, of what you would have us do. I just praise you, Father, for the opportunity here. We just ask, Lord, that you guide us and direct us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible. At this time, I would like to call upon Mitch Galvan. We've got to, we're going to honor some officers. The Granbury Police Department officer started a fundraising event to benefit the Kids Armor of Hope organization by raising money to grow their Santa beards. The funds will be used to provide Christmas gifts for the kids who were taken to the Royal Family Kids Camp this past summer. The gifts will be handed out at their Christmas party on December 13.
Mayor Protim, Council, and Mr. Manager, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come free tonight and share some exciting news. Before we get into the explanation of our Santa Cops program that we put on this year, I first want to say that I am so proud of these guys out here that are wearing the Santa caps along with me. As you can tell, we've kind of changed the look of the Granbury Police Department here in the last month and a half. Some are sporting them, and those that aren't can't. So, sorry, Doug. I had to drop that out. They took this project, and they went at it with extreme enthusiasm as they went out to raise this money in an effort to grow their Santa beards. And I can't say enough for them, and I can't say enough for the business owners and the residents of this community. The response was absolutely amazing, as you'll see shortly during the check presentation. But this little project was the brainchild of our lead elf, Patrol Sergeant Michael Holly. And I'm going to let Mike come up and explain the details of how the project came to be, and then he'll call up Jeff and Mark, and we'll make a presentation. Michael?
Hello, Michael Holly. Yeah, this started about September. Came up with an ideal of, you know, hey, let's raise some money for kids to have some Christmas gifts, and started trying to think of ways to do that, and the beards kind of make sense. You know, we're going to call ourselves Santa Cops. The beards kind of go along with the theme. So, I presented the ideal to Chief, and he signed off on it and actually kind of challenged us a little bit. He said originally that, okay, well, if we're going to do this, you know, we need full participation, and we need to raise $200 an officer. I had spoke with Jeff Jeffries and Mark Hackney of Kids Armor of Hope about the kids that they serve, and I'm going to let them tell you a little bit more about that when they get up here. But they stated that, you know, for this Christmas party, it takes, you know, a good $5,000 or so to, you know, to cover the cost of the gifts. So, I thought, well, $200 an officer, you know, it gives us a little wiggle room. We could probably make that work. Well, I was very surprised when we started. So, October 30, we started growing our beards, and we started raising money. Very proud of these guys. They knocked it out of the park. The very first day we started, Officer Highs, go ahead and stand up. Go ahead and stand up. Officer Highs here, he contacted me. He sent me a text message, hey, I just got $700. Very first day. So, that kind of set the pace, and we went way beyond that, way beyond the $5,000. These guys all, I guess it came, like most things with us, came a little competitive, you know, who could raise the most money? And so, we have a fairly large check to present today. I'll go ahead and get Mark and Jeff to come on up here. And if I can get Sergeant Clemmons and Chris Weston to come up and hold the check with them. These two guys, they raised the most money out of everybody's share. Get there in front of everybody where we can see. So, this check is written from Santa Cops, Two Kids Armor of Hope for Christmas. It's an amount of $20,361. With the goal to $5,000, I'm pretty proud that we was able to come up with that large amount. It'd be good for the kids. Turn this over to Mark and Jeff. Let them tell you a little bit about the kids we're helping.
It's unbelievable. When Mike came up to me and asked if we could do this, Jeff and I were like, sure. We always are trying to raise money for the children we serve. For those of you who don't know, we work with the abused and abandoned children here in Hood County. We have, Jeff has run the Royal Family Kids Camp here in Granbury since 2000. We started Kids Armor of Hope in 2009. And like every nonprofit, we scrimp and save and scrimp and save to take all of our children to a summer camp, and we started a Christmas party now about three years ago. Just because the children that we serve, typically, child abuse has become one of those things that's not talked about a lot. The children that are in foster care or in their family care, they don't typically go out so much with the Angel Tree children. They want to kind of fly under the radar. And so, that's the children we serve. I can honestly say that almost every child that we will serve for Christmas, what we give them for Christmas will be their only Christmas. I can't say enough about how touched we are about the participation of the Granbury Police Department. You guys are absolutely amazing.
Say something, Don. This has been overwhelming. When Holly came to us, we said, of course, you know, anything that you want to do for us, we'd appreciate it, not expecting anything near what they did. Jokingly, you know, Mark and I told Holly, we just hope you're not pulling your guns on people when you're approaching. But last night, we started decorating the hall for the Christmas party. We're expecting 63 children at the Christmas party, plus their families. When we started the Christmas parties, we just invited the children that came to camp. And that year, we had, I think we had 30 children come, but, you know, inviting the whole family, we only had toys for the children that came to camp. And, you know, I felt like a heel giving toys to, you know, half or one-third of the children that were there. I told Mark, we can never do that again. So, we started inviting the whole foster family, and in some cases, there's 11 children in a home. So, we get the age, name, gender, and all their clothing sizes, and we buy for each child there. Then, to go along with that, we offer them a traditional Christmas dinner. So, you know, we, last year, we received four smoked turkeys, two spiral sliced hams, and all the trimmings. This year, all of, we haven't had to go out and look for any food. We got a cafe or restaurant that has offered to feed 200 people at the Christmas party. So, we're completely overwhelmed with the generosity that we've received this year. And we want, again, we want to say thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mitch. You know, I must say, that's quite a program to raise over $20,000, and I think it's the first time you've done it. And you've set the bar pretty high, though, for next year, I guess, you know, so, but we'll be looking forward to it. But it's just another example of what this community does for things like this, when they go out there and they reach in their pockets to fund things like this. And it doesn't surprise me at all to see Granbury step up to the plate and do these kind of things. But once again, thanks, officers, for what you've done. Thank you very much. At this time, I think Councilman Parsons would like to recognize, I guess you still want to recognize somebody out there?
Yes. I don't seem to hear. There was a young man named Aiden Roberts, who I had the pleasure of visiting with this afternoon. He's an eighth grader here in the school system in Granbury, and he wanted, he's working on his Eagle Scout certification. And so, he wanted to talk about water issues and things that were going on there. So, I had the privilege of meeting with this young man this afternoon and was hoping, he was supposed to come back, but I was hoping he'd come back so that we could personally acknowledge him. But a lot of interesting conversation, very sharp young man, and probably be one of our future leaders. So, we've got a good group of kids coming along. Thank you, man.
Thank you. At this time, we normally have our open mic. Where the citizens have the ability to come up and talk. We don't have anybody, so we're going to move right on down to our consent agenda. The consent agenda is the approval of the council minutes of the special meeting of November 14, 2013, and the minutes of the regular meeting of November 19, 2013. Council, you've all had an opportunity to look these minutes over. Are there any changes or amendments to it? If not, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November 14 and the November 19 minutes.
Slow move.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those minutes are approved. Next, we'll move into the deliberation agenda, the first one being, a public hearing regarding a request of Texas Lakes Corporation to rezone a 10.81 acre tract of the John Chinowitz survey, abstract number 118, from interim holding to planned development residential 7,000 PD/R-7, and consider and approve an ordinance providing for the said rezoning. Now, the property is located west of Highway 51 and north of Hunter Park. I'm going to call upon Scott Stopcheck to give the Council some more information on it. Scott?
We also have a plat application tied to this rezoning request, so it's your option to open the public hearing for the plat as well.
Why don't we go ahead, and we'll just open that one up, too. Thank you, Scott. The public hearing is regarding the request also of Texas Lakes Corporation to final plat, the 10.81 acre tract of John Chinowitz survey, abstract number 118, as lots 38 through 43, block six, lots 15 through 20, block seven, lots 11 through 21, block eight, and lots 1 through 12, block nine, of the Abe's Landing addition, phase 5A-2, and consider and approve said the final plat. This property is located west of Highway 51 and north of Hunter Park. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim, Council, Mr. Manager. We'll start with the rezoning request. The property is located just to the south of Phase 5A1, south of Abe's Boulevard. What's being proposed is to take this property out of interim holding or agriculture and construct the planned development. The planned development will be consistent with the planned development that was constructed to the property or the phase to the north. The only reason for the planned development to vary from the base R7 district is to allow for the five-foot interior side setbacks. In your agenda packet, you can see the development plan that's part of the adoption ordinance itself. This is the graphic that's representative of that. You can see the area, again, located just to the south of the existing phase. The only reason, again, is to allow for the five-foot interior side setbacks within the development. The P&amp;Z and the city staff, per city staff recommendations, recommended approval of the rezoning request for the PD with the condition that the required screening fence running contiguous along Highway 51 be the same construction and design, that is height, material, color, articulations, et cetera, as the fence currently constructed for 5A1. This will be expected along subsequent phases as they follow to the south along Weatherford Highway for consistency purposes in architectural design for the gated community. But this type of fencing material, because it's a standard within our zoning ordinance, needs to be rolled into each adoption ordinance, setting the PD in place for the design standards for the screening fence. So, that's why you see it as a condition on the adoption ordinance. Regarding the plat application, we have some variances associated with the plat itself. Let me get to the screen here. We have a variance to 39 and 45 to not extend an eight-inch sewer main along the entire length of Lot 20, Block 7. I've got a graphic representing that. You can see circled in blue is the area in Lot 20, representing that length along the lot frontage that won't have a sewer. There's no need. Our engineers looked at the sewer design for this. You can see over to the west, there's a connection point for the subsequent phase as it continues southward. Based on the design engineer's proposal and our review engineer's comments, there's no need to extend that particular link other than to serve Lot 20 as it exists. We have another variance to allow for a variance to not install streetlights along Highway 51 frontage, and we have a variance to 410 and 310 to not upgrade Highway 51 to urban standards. So, with that wrap-up, P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval of the rezoning with the condition, as mentioned earlier, on the rezoning request regarding the screening fence, and city staff is recommending approval of the final plat with associated conditions as presented by the applicant.
Thank you, Scott. I'll now open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public who'd like to talk on this subject? Council, any questions or concerns? If not, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion to rezone the property that the planned development has based to approve the rezoning request with the conditions of, number one, the required screening fence running contagious to Highway 51 will be the same construction and design, height, material, color, et cetera, as the fence currently constructed from Phase 5A1. Do I hear a motion?
Slow move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. I have a second by Councilman Couch. Is there any more discussion, Council? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Next move to the final plat. I'll entertain a motion.
I do have a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilman Allen.
And it might have should have been asked at that time on the first one, but I think I'll page here. Looking at item number two, and it's the second drawing, you've got a red circle around something there. Scott?
In the staff report, on page two of the staff report, that, in essence, is a private drainage easement that drains back to the back. So, if you look just below that on infrastructure service delivery requirements, what we're just informing you is that there's a private drainage to a channel that goes to the back that will be privately maintained. The bottom portion of that service delivery impact in your staff report says that there's no outstanding issue by the city engineer. So, we're just informing you that there's some sewer, storm sewer, infrastructure in place. They're private, and there's no outstanding issue there. So, sorry if the red circle was misleading. I do want to mention as a sidebar comment that the council did pass the PIA, if you recall, last council meeting, so the developer could get an early jump on the infrastructure of the water and sewer. That's why we don't have the PIA tied with this particular final plat application as we typically do. The PIA was already executed. That's in place. We have the surety for it. All that's left is the plat.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing for the replat. Nobody has anything to add to that, Council? Any more comments on the replat? With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final plat application presented by the applicant, based on the approval of the variance of section 3.9 and 4.5 not to extend the eight-inch sewer main, and also the approval of the variance to section 4.8 to not provide the streetlights along Highway 51 frontage, and also the approval of the variance to section 4.10 to not approve the frontage of Highway 51 to meet the current city standards nor with sidewalks installed along the Tex-Stop Highway. Do I have a motion?
Slow move.
I've got a motion by Councilman Parsons. Do I hear a second? I have a second by Councilman Perkel. Council, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
My friend Aiden Roberts has shown up. Wanted to acknowledge Aiden.
Sure, let's get him up here.
Candidate for Eagle Scout, trying to learn about water issues and lake issues and how they affect us, and I wanted to congratulate him on his hard work. Say thank you for participating in government. Good job. Y'all get this, y'all.
Thank you, Councilman Parsons. Thank you. We did complete that. Pardon?
Thank you.
Okay, we completed the second of the public hearing. We're going to move on to the third public hearing regarding a request of MMSD Corporation to final plat, 1339 North Plaza Drive, being a 3.958 acre tract of the Marcus Smith survey, abstract number 504, and the Martin Sitzer survey, abstract number 502, as lots 1 and 2, block 1, of the South Town Center addition, and consider and approve the said final plat. Scott, could you give us more information on that, please?
Mr. Mayor Protim, Council, Mr. Manager, this is a plat that we saw previously as a preliminary plat application, taking the property that's bounded in blue, or this aqua blue color, and proposing two lots of record. This is the site being proposed. As we mentioned during the preliminary plat, it's still the case. Lot 1, Block 1 is being proposed for the new Aldi grocery store. There is no yet known use slated for Lot 2, Block 1, which is located to the west. The purpose of the plat is to get these two lots on the books and have the Aldi store permitted, reviewed and permitted as soon as possible. I can tell you the building plans are in-house. We're reviewing the building plans as we speak. Again, this is a final plat. Typically with final plats, we see infrastructure with that. In this particular case, the only infrastructure was a small portion of a water line. It comprised less than $10,000 worth of public improvements. As such, the subdivision ordinance allows staff to approve PIA's less than $25,000. The PIA was staff-approved. In essence, it's just a little water line stub with a fire hydrant to make sure that the building's encased in a fire hydrant protection halo. There are no variances associated with this plat. All the variances were approved by council at the preliminary plat stage, so this particular application becomes ministerial in its nature. And as soon as the plat's filed and the plans are reviewed and ready to go, we should expect a demo permit for the hotel structure that you see there on site. A final point of note, you'll notice that there's trees, vegetation on site. There is a dedication tree fund requirement to the tune of about $30,000. That will be part of the proposal or package given to the city at the same time the final plat's ready for recording. With that in mind, city staff and P&amp;Z recommend approval of the final plat as presented by the applicant.
Thank you, Scott. This time, I'll open the public hearing up to the public. Is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak on this matter? Council, do you have any concerns?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
The building that'll be in Lot 1 will all be torn down, right?
That's correct.
And what about the two buildings that remain in Lot 2?
As mentioned, there's no known use for those particular, that particular area. It's my understanding that those buildings will remain until such time that an option holder or prospective buyer comes in and has designs on that particular lot. But they will remain in place. It's our hope that once the Aldi gets some momentum going out there, they'll see the value of that particular lot, and hopefully, somebody will come in and actually revitalize that lot with new construction.
And now, you'll at least have to have a lot that's a development size with plenty of parking and everything.
That's correct.
Council, any more questions on this matter?
They're going to make, I got one, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Allen.
Thank you. They're going to make those apartments, you said, right? Where the hotel is now?
Where the hotel is now, that's going to be an Aldi grocery store.
Which one would you say they was going to make apartments out of?
Where the hotel is, that's going to be the grocery store, the two buildings, the restaurant, basically just to the west of that. Those buildings will remain until we figure out, or until an option holder comes in and has designs on what particular use they're proposing to go there. But there's, to my knowledge, there's nothing about apartments on this particular site at this time.
Council, any more questions?
Well, I'm for one, I'm grateful that, you know, we're going to be losing our Kroger, and this will be a nice, I was concerned that we'll be going north to get our groceries, so I'm glad to see this come in.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. If there's no more questions from the council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final plat, the application as presented by the applicant, as recommended by the staff.
Slow move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Couch. Council, any more discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. It is approved. Our next item is a public hearing regarding the request of Vine Right Properties LLC to replat Lot 1, Block 1, of the Vineyards at Harbor Lakes as lots 1R1-1R39 and approximately 1.892 acres of common area of the Vineyards at Harbor Lakes, and consider and approve the said plat. The property is located at the intersection of Harbor Lakes Drive and Clubhouse Drive. Scott Stopcheck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim, Council, and Mr. Manager. You can see the area that's being platted out, bounded in this same aqua blue color. We've seen this plat prior, about a year, a little over a year ago. It's the exact same application that the council approved at that time, it's just termed out. In fact, our subdivision ordinance requires a certain term. If it's not filed for record within that timeframe, it automatically expires, becomes null and void. Unfortunately, the applicant wasn't available to do the administrative side of acquiring the necessary approvals and signatures on his side in order to file it for record. So, they're basically re-upping the same application that was approved by council some time ago. If you recall, about a year ago, there was some discussion about, there was an outstanding franchise easement that they did want to sign off on it. And I can tell you, all those franchise letters, again, are in our file. All the utility franchises, the Atlases and the AT&amp;Ts and the Charters have signed off that they're fine with the abandonment or vacation of those easements that are shown in black in this picture. So, those easements will be abandoned as a part of this. It will also follow, the plat application will also follow- All the utility franchises, the Atlases and the AT&amp;Ts and the charters have signed off that they're fine with the abandonment or vacation of those easements that are shown in black in this picture. So, those easements will be abandoned as a part of this. It will also follow, the plat application will also follow, the zoning that's in place, taking it, what was previously multifamily, a single lot of record, into individual lots to allow for those property owners to own the property in front of their living unithness. So, we have the same variances that we reviewed a little over a year ago. We have a variance to 3.5B to not provide lots with a minimum 35-foot frontage width onto a dedicated street. That's our subdivision ordinance with requirement. 3.1 to not provide the required right-of-way or street width. Again, in this instance, we're going from multifamily over to a townhome-type development. Townhomes require a dedicated public right-of-way width, and here, this is basically, they're converting a private drive into their access onto a public street. Then we have a variance to 3.3E to not provide the 15-foot front and 5-foot side rear utility easements on all platted lots. Again, there's common walls between some of the living units, and we've seen that similarly on other, similar types of design of developments where they have common walls. P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval of the plat application as presented, as well as the accompanying variances as discussed.
Thank you, Scott. I'll now open up the public hearing to the public. Is there anybody in the public who wanted to discuss this matter? Council, any questions or concerns on this? You guys are too easy tonight.
I have one, Mayor.
Say, Councilman Allen?
It says on November 18th, they went P&amp;Z, but it doesn't say how they voted or anything.
They unanimously recommended approval as presented.
I thought you said it, but I didn't read it. Okay.
Council, any more concerns, questions?
Well, I am, I'm just curious about the slab, the existing slabs. Is that the same owner?
Let's get Mr. Hall up here to see if he can respond to that. I don't want to speak on behalf of the developer or the development.
Mayor Protem, council members, city manager. I'm John Hall. Our company is the Homero Association Management Firm, but then I also was retained to convert these condominiums into townhomes. And it occurred at the same time that a new, two individuals that formed an entity called Vine Right Properties had purchased the remaining, well, actually the entire lot one, block one. And we had a legal opinion that there was a defect in the original filing of the condos, so, in that there was not a survey stamp saying that everything was in compliance with section 82 of the Texas Property Code. That was one issue. And after talking with realtors and lenders and the owners and all, everyone wanted to convert to townhomes, and so that's what we've been doing. It's been a rather arduous process because of all the signatures that we had to get of all of the property owners. To be specific to your question, the new owners of all the rest of the property, once this is approved, they will own that concrete foundation there, and along with all the vacant lots, and their intention is to build on that concrete foundation in the spring. Identical, I mean, very, very similar, from the exterior, they'll be identical units. Interior, they're doing some special design.
My question, Scott, is that do they have, do we need to do another inspection of this since it's been there so long?
That would be a good question. In fact, what I would suppose would happen is when they start initiating the building permit activity, the building department would reflect on their past inspection reports and go back out there and look to make sure that things haven't been damaged. And even when we get building plans, generally, the building plans are accompanied by architectural and structural plans that will certify what they're building on insofar as the foundation. So, all that will be dovetailed together, and I'm sure the building department will proceed from there.
So, they'd have to start over as if they poured the pads and get the inspection?
Either that or start from the foundation, but I think the building department, working with the designers, the architect and the engineer, based on their information they're submitting, would, building department would reflect on the structural engineer's usage in his building plans or her building plans, that everything is agreeable.
I mean, I would be concerned about the plumbing also in that, because it's already set.
Sure, sure. Generally, before they pour the concrete, there's a rough end for plumbing, so that needs to be discussed, too.
Thank you. Council, any more questions for John? Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Now, close the public hearing. Council, any more questions or concerns on this matter? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the replat with the variances of section 3.5B and the variance of 3.1, and also the variance of section 3.3E to not provide a 15-foot front and 5-foot side and rear utility assessment on all the platted lots. Do I have a motion?
No move.
I have a motion by Councilman Cow. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is to consider the request of United Co-op Service to execute a public improvement agreement for public water and fire hydrants installation on lot one, block one, of the United Corporate Service addition. Value of the public improvements are estimated at $55,170, council owner. And also, a public hearing regarding the request to final plat, 320 Fall Creek Highway, being a 10.010 acre tract of the Benjamin Green survey, abstract number 196, as lot one, block one, of the United Corporate Service addition, and approve the said final plat. Scott, you want to enlighten us on that one a little bit?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor Protem, council, Mr. Manager. We've seen this application previously, about a month ago, as a preliminary plat. Again, the preliminary plat showed that this is being sustained on a water line loop, and the water line loop is actually an A-MUD franchise utility. The city does not have a water line in this vicinity. Again, this plat is to support development for an expansion of the UCS facility. You can see generally the site plan at this location, along with the proposed water line loop. There's actually two lines within the Fall Creek Highway, back to the PIA. The public improvement agreement in this particular case will be a three-party agreement between the city of Granbury, who's got the adopted standards within its city limits for public water lines, A-MUD, who has the infrastructure, and the developer, who will have the contractor go out there and basically build the lines. I can tell you, in your public improvement agreement, there's two clerical elements in the PIA that's not shown on page one. They mistakenly, well, we changed Mayor Ricky Pratt to the Mayor Protem on the signature page and the front page as well, as well as added A-MUD signature. So, in your agenda packet, there is two modifications to the PIA that you need to be aware of. The PIA is worth approximately $55,000 roughly, and once executed, it will roll into the final plat being of proper format to actually support the plat application. I can tell you, the variances were presented and approved by council at the preliminary plat. There's no variances additional with this final plat application. As such, the final plat in and of itself is ministerial, again. So, city staff and P&amp;Z recommend execution of the PIA for the water line loop for $55,000, and approval of the final plat as submitted. And just as a point of recollection, there is no sewer in this. There's, there will be a septic application that will be processed by the city in this instance. But there will be that note regarding the extensions of the utilities two and three once they're made available, and that will be recorded on the plat. Mayor Protem, I'll be happy to entertain any questions, should the council have any.
Scott, I've got one. Scott, when you say it's a three-party agreement with the city and A-MUD and the developer, is the developer United Co-op, or is that the?
Yes, it'll be United Co-op, and United Co-op will go out and hire the contractor. The $55,000, we do have the surety in hand, so, once the improvements are installed and inspected, we have the ass built, and we'll have the two-year maintenance bond. Once we get that, everything's finalized, we'll release the surety back to them.
Very good.
I got a question, Mayor.
Councilman Allen?
The surety, is that the letter?
Irrevocable letter credit.
Okay, I got one for our attorney, Stewart, then. Have you read the letter, letter credit, Stewart?
Yes.
You don't have any problems?
No.
Get her up, then.
I worked with development on that letter. They showed it to me, I reviewed it.
Too many big words for me.
Council, any more?
I'd like to ask a couple of questions about sewer. Uh, Granbury Sewer is what, on the north side or east side of 377 at that point, up close to Colwell Bank, right?
Actually, the terminating point is, there's a Montessori school just to the east of the Durant Autoplex property, and it terminates there.
So, it's well outside the, what, 800 feet, or what is that?
It's, I believe it's for one to 15 service units, it's within 500 feet.
And then what about A-MUD sewer? It's on down further south.
That's correct. It's closer toward the triangle.
Close. Thank you.
One question, council? With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final plat as presented by the applicant. We're doing the public improvement. I'll say that again, we'll entertain a motion to approve the public improvement as presented by the applicant.
No move.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons. Have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Cow. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That's part of the process. The next one, we will entertain a motion to approve the final plat of the 320 Fall Creek Highway, being the 10-acre, I'm sorry, being the 10.10 acre tract of the Benjamin Green survey, as tract number 196, as lot one, block one, of the United Corporate Service addition, and approve that final plat.
No move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Perkel. Council, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Moving down to our next interesting item here, consider a request of use of the city beach for a live bull riding event to be held during the Independence Day celebration scheduled for March 1st, 2014, and March 2nd, 2014. Council, I'm going to call upon Cullen Chris, if I could, to speak on this matter just a little bit for us. Kind of scary bringing bull riders in here.
Mayor Protem, councilman, my name is Cullen Chris, but I'm president of the Texas Heroes Foundation, and next to me is Kelly Clark with the Shoot Two Productions. I'm Kelly Clark, I live at 1601 Mcvoid Road in Springtown, Parker County. Retired bull rider, so we're all.
Thank you, Kelly. Council, I'm going to open this up. If you've got any questions for these two gentlemen concerning this bull riding event for the city, city beach?
Cullen, can you tell us a little bit about it? I had the privilege of hearing about it a little bit earlier, which we have informed the members of the audience what we're talking about.
Well, you know, I think Kelly actually would probably really enlighten us more than I will. You know, he's got a really neat mobile type setup, and he'll actually, with the setup, he brings in the bulls from his ranch over in about 45 minutes west of here. So, I'll just let Kelly kind of go into it a little bit deeper. Thank you, council. We have a standalone arena that we set up. It's all portable. We have our own bleachers, our own back pins. It's made of very heavy steel. Each is an individual panel about 12 feet long. We'll set it up. Our footprint's about 150 by 100, contains everything within it, and we've been using this particular set for about 20 years now.
Mayor, I will say a few things. I did go to a meeting, whenever y'all had your Texas Historical Day meeting, had the opportunity to meet the gentleman here, and my question was his insurance, and he said they're well took care of on that, and the city will be named on it, and also, if ever had a bull get loose, and just some of the riders, I think he said. But he gave us a list of cities that they've done it before. I think it's safe. I did hear a rumor, maybe Mayor Protem, you can correct me on this, because it's about you, that you said if you won the election, you'd ride the first bull. Is that right or wrong?
Moving right along.
Trying to get you a bull rider.
All right. Thank you.
Do you bring the riders in, too?
Yes, sir, we're sanctioned through a professional association, and they come from all around the state as well as out of state, and we do carry a million dollars liability insurance, and we will name the city as one of the claims on there.
You take the bulls back at night, right?
Yes, sir. The, they won't be there other than the time that we use them. We really don't want them, we don't need them there at that time. We just, we bring them in a trailer, we'll unload them, they'll perform, they'll go right back on a trailer and out. So, they'll be there a very limited time.
Kelly, I got a couple of questions and concerns here. You know, I think what I'm hearing is this is an event, you travel all around and you do this, and I guess you've tied in with Cullen on his Independence Day celebration to bring this to town to possibly help raise some money in this celebration and also help your pocketbook, too, a little bit there. Do you bring the, you do the cleanup, and you come in there and you do bulls, and then you do the smaller animals also for kids? I mean, how long does this, this event actually go on for, one day?
We'll do what we call a standalone mutton busting. It's the sheep riding for the kids. It generally lasts about an hour or so, depending on how many entries we get. Again, the sheep will come in and go right back out. One guy brings them out of Weatherford, he'll come in in a one trailer, he'll bring them in, we'll utilize them, put them back on the trailer, and they'll be gone, because then, when the bulls come in, we don't have the sheep there at the same time. Again, we do these at a number of other municipalities around. We've done the city of Hasslet, will be our fifth year coming up. I have a three-year contract with them. We do the Justin Fund Days, again, I have a three-year contract with them. We do the Ponder Frontier Days, Lake Worth, the Lions Club has us put on one there in their city park. I'll give you the names and references to all them. We clean up. I'll be out there on Sunday picking up cigarette butts. I want it to look like it looked when we left.
Right. And I do understand that it's a big event, and it draws a lot of people to it, and that's what, that's what we want, is to bring a lot of people to these events and possibly even do this some, you know, other times other than the Independence Day celebration.
Yes, sir.
So, it sounds like a pretty good opportunity there to bring people to town to watch some event like this, so. My one other concern was, you said you bring the bleachers. Now, how do you know how many people you're going to have watching it? Is it limited, or you just, as many people as you want can come, and then if we need additional bleachers, we supply them?
We can facilitate about 1,200 people. We have a VIP ring around it, and it's kind of a safety net, if you will. We noticed that the kids didn't understand that it was live bull riding, so they would get up into the fence and stuff. You can tell them to get back, but if their parents don't make them, that's another issue. So, we build a, kind of a moat around it where we have VIP set. We'll have the city council there. You can sit right up ringside. We can seat about 100 and 150 or better around it, and then we have aluminum bleachers that go around the rest of it. Seats about 150 a section, and we have five of those. At Justin, last two years, we've had standing room only, so, we want them coming back for more.
I've got a question on Martin.
Councilman? Councilman Parkold?
Are you going to park, unload and unload up by the hotel?
Yes, sir. We've done a site survey there numerous times, and we feel like our best place would be real close to it, over there by the hotel. We can actually make an alley out of panels and keep the trucks and trailers up on the cement and just run the bulls down there. We bring in about 25 bulls. They'll come in, they'll be individually pinned. We have 11 individual pins in the back. Those bulls will go into there, we'll buck them in the arena, put them right back in, and then out the same way they came in.
We'll probably need to block off some of the conference parking for y'all to.
Yes, sir.
Park the rigs up there.
And again, there'll only be probably the maximum four trailers. And again, two of them are going to come in and go out. The other ones, I have a trick roper that comes, and he'll bring a couple of horses and stuff and do some of his entertainment. So, he'll be there. My company has some trailers that we'll bring in, too, so.
What are the tickets going to sell for? I remember y'all telling me, but I don't remember, or y'all had a price that the other places. Have y'all come up with a price for them here?
It varies at different municipalities. Some events we do for free. The maximum ticket we've had is $7. At Hasslet, they charge $3 and $2.
Do you think the $7 would be max, then, Cullen?
I, yeah.
Is this the first time you've done it on a city beach?
We do it in the Hasslet City Park, the Justin Community Park. We do it in the Lake Worth City Park.
I mean, a beach?
A beach, we haven't done yet.
Okay, okay.
There's not many beaches around this area of here.
That's what I wanted to hear you say.
We're very excited to get an opportunity to do this. We really are.
Thank you, Kelly.
One question, I forget at the meeting, we talked about it, but are you handling concessions, or is the city handling concessions?
We buck bulls.
Okay. We have the ability to handle, we will handle concessions, okay?
Stay on the agenda there, Wayne. We're going to talk about the approval of the city beach right now.
Yeah.
Okay, counsel, any more questions for these gentlemen? All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Counsel, any more discussion on this matter? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request of the city beach for a live bull riding event to be held during the Texas Independence Day celebration. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by numerous people, Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. We will have a bull riding. Our next item, as we put on the agenda, this may be the final one, Wayne, I don't know. The discussion.
Ron Surdy.
The discussion of the status of the Opera House redevelopment project, and consider and approve any recommendations from that Opera House Recommendation Committee. Wayne, you want to kick this one off for him, please?
Well, I just want to brag on Rob and his crew, Bill Scott, that Scott Tucker Construction's done a wonderful job. We're very near to completion, and, you know, they're doing the final steps. I'll let Rob talk about that, but we're in good shape for the gala, and we expect a very good gala. So, Rob, why don't you talk about the finalization of the Opera House?
I'm Rob Keane. I live at 3222 Meandering Way in Granberry. As Wayne just said, we're looking forward to an exciting gala. Hopefully, the weather cooperates, but that's not out of our hands. This will probably be my last council meeting to talk about the Opera House, because it's going to be done. It's exciting, it's looking nice. You'll, the people that come in will receive that wow factor that the city wants. As we speak, we're spending the night tonight painting the lobby with its final coat. Last night, we stained all the woodwork, and we left at 3:30 this morning, and we were back at 7:30 to start again. So, it's not that we only have 48 hours. The fact is, I still have 48 hours to finish. So, time is running smooth. As far as major kinks in the project, I don't think we've hit any, none that we couldn't work out. There's been issues to deal with, but as far as problems, we've had no problems. I never have problems. It's always solutions that I look for. I don't look for anything else but solutions. It's been fun working with the city. It's been fun doing the project. I've really enjoyed it. My boss, Bill Scott, is excited about it. I do want everybody to know, though, that this total project was a team project. It's not just me, it's not just Bill, and it's not just the city. It's all of us together. It takes a team to put a project together like this in such a short amount of time. If we, if there would have been any eyes in that word of team, then it would have never came together. It takes all of us to do it. So, please don't consider praising me personally or Scott Tucker Construction. We need to thank each and every one of us, because that's what it took to put this thing together. And I appreciate the help from the city council and from the city facilities that do my inspections, that do my water hookups, my power, and everything else. It all came together and gelled very well. I look forward to doing more work in the city of Granberry, maybe not for the city of Granberry, but in the city of Granberry for other developers or whatever. But I'll entertain now any questions, and again, I thank each and every one of you.
Thank you, Rob. Counsel, any questions for Rob before he departs?
I'd just say that he did a great, great job, the whole, your whole team, and I thank Mr. Parsons, Mr. Cal, Mr. McCafflin, and Mr. Hewland on that team for the city that did a lot of changing back and forth, but it is beautiful. I'm proud the way they worked with y'all, and y'all worked with them. It's really going to be, as I call it, the Taj Mahal of Granberry, Texas.
Yep.
Thank you, Rob.
It's the crown jewel now, so.
Yes, thank you.
Rob, can we play golf Sunday, or is it Sunday week?
Sunday a week.
Sunday week, yes.
Might be a little cold.
I'll take you out on that. We'll find on that.
Depends on the weather.
Depends on the weather.
I know that Thanksgiving, my Thanksgiving plans were canceled due to the necessity of having people work, because, I mean, subcontractors, if you're not there, they feel like they don't need to be there. So, we worked through the Thanksgiving weekend, so I will be taking an extended Christmas vacation, so.
We'll play a bunch of golf, then. I did have a question. We're going on the downtown the other night and looking at the high lines that are on the big crockett, that tie into the back nutshell and that. Are we going to underground that part, or is that a part of this?
I don't think that's in the plan. We initially thought we might have to until we changed the design because of the construction requirements, but we, they were able to work around that, so we didn't have to take those high wires. Now.
We've gone underground over on.
Over on the other side, we've gone on the other side. We could always take it down. It doesn't, it just wasn't in the original project.
So, what I would like to see is in the future, come back with the money to take this other underground.
Okay.
It'd have been nice, it'd have been nice if you'd have done that before we tried to put stone up back there.
Yeah. Yeah, but we talked about that, and we worked around that for scalpel reasons.
If we're going to do it, though, is that something we should go ahead and run a sleeve before we do the hot topping back there?
No, because you'll have to do it in that easement where the sidewalk goes.
Okay.
That's the only way you can do it. Because we're.
It's not being paved, that easement, that's going to be there.
No, it's concrete, so. And right now, you know, the building plus the handicap ramp goes right to the edge of the sidewalk, so. And that's what your easement would have to go through to bury anything there, so.
Rob, I, too, want to thank you for your patience, and also, I want to recognize your wife that put up with us going in and out of that place all the time and trying to get a sneak preview of it, and she was right on our tails, running us in and out of there all the time, but, you know, she did an excellent job, too, and so I want to make sure that she's recognized, too, for what she's done, and your patience you've had with us going in and out of there, but she's done a fabulous job, and I'm looking forward to utilizing this Opera House.
Well, and I appreciate that, and so does she. She's my right-hand man and has been for 41 years now, so. She knows everything there is to know about construction, not as much as I do, of course, but.
Be careful, be careful, you're being taped.
Yeah, that's okay. I was taped earlier today by Channel 11, too, and so.
Well, thank you, Rob.
I haven't got the opportunity to see you, but.
Counsel, any more questions for Rob?
Yeah, Rob, I want to, I want to express my gratitude to you, to your wife, to Bill. It's been a joy to work with you guys. We could not have picked a better team than we did.
All right, thank you.
I mean, to look at this, a year ago, we didn't have a set of plans that we were going to execute on, and we redesigned it, and you built it, and it's just, it's been fantastic. A pleasure to work with you guys.
All right, thank you. And just so you know, I keep a daily log. Today is the 190th working day on that project. 190 days to put that thing together. Working days.
Thanks.
So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
I got to go paint.
That was a discussion item, counsel. Any more discussion on that matter? With that, we'll close that. If there are no more discussion with the council, we'll close the council meeting.